I'm gonna call to order the May eleventh, two thousand seventeen, Village Webster Board Meeting. Trustee after me, I appreciate it. Please in the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first off, tonight, we have Andy Reynolds with Widow's Sons to talk once again about the, his annual fundraiser. Andy, if you'd like to come up with the guys.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir.
This is our sixth annual Spring Thing fundraiser. Again, this year's for the military, and this year, we're gonna do a sizable donation to the Webster Fire Department for their generosity in letting us use their field every year. I wanna thank Mayor Cahill for his continued support, and Town Supervisor Rod Nesbit. We got two great bands again this year. With all that being said, I'm gonna introduce the chairman of the committee this year, who has been working hours and hours and hours to make this event, our Vice President, Ken Lonzo.
Ken, nice.
Hi, thank you. We, don't tell Andy, but I really haven't put him in that much time, but I've been milking it, so it's kinda... Yeah, we got, again, like Andy said, this is our sixth year doing this. I mean, those of you who are, have been around have seen the increase in the motorcycle traffic in town. We had a lot of people coming in from, from all over this year. We've got sixteen states, two provinces in Canada, and the Philippines actually being represented, just from the Widow's Sons. Plus, we're also, because of the bans that we got this year, and the increased advertising and marketing that we're doing this year, we're expecting to bring in, just on that Saturday alone, twelve to fifteen hundred people to come over to the fireman's field to, you know, just to help and support and raise some money for, for our military and the fire department. As you guys know, we've been at Webster Firehouse, Webster Fireman's Field now for, for a number of years, and they have been absolutely amazing and just going above and beyond. So, like Andy said, this year, we're gonna be making a sizable donation to them as well at the proceeds of the event. If you guys happen to see during all next week, we're gonna have, like I said, is, we're expecting between a hundred fifty and two hundred people coming in from out of town. Get a whole bunch of hotels blocked out. If you happen to see some motorcycles on the side of the road, you know, just kinda give them a little bit more room if you can, or, you know, maybe, you know, if they're broken now, just stop and help, that'd be awesome. We're gonna have a couple of things going on for a couple of days prior to the Spring Thing, but we're really here to talk about the Spring Thing most, first and foremost. Two great bands, we've got the official band of the US Navy SEALs, it's the American Rogues. They're coming out, they're gonna be playing for us, they play a great Celtic set, and they are absolutely amazing. We heard them last year at the American Legion in Greece, and they've been kind enough to come out and, and play for us at this event. Also got a local band called Bonfire. I don't know if anybody's familiar with Bonfire, the A.C.T.C. Band? They do an amazing job. I've been trying to get them, trying to get them in and nail them down for a number of years now, and finally, we were able to come to terms with them. So, that's, I'm, I'm really excited about that. We've got a whole bunch of radio spots, you'll be hearing us on the radio, maybe the I-Hub, maybe I-Bar Media Radio Stations, B-B ninety-five-one, there's like four or five of them, I can't think of them off the top of my head. We're also gonna be having a Mercy Flight helicopter will be represented at the, at the event, along with a whole bunch of other military vehicles. We're gonna have the parade coming in again this year. Again, last couple of years, we've been close to three miles long, just in that parade, of motorcycles and military vehicles and, and Patriot Guard, Patriot Guard riders with the big flag bikes. And, like I said, this year, we're supposed to have the, we're trying to work it out where the Mercy Flight can kinda come in as we're coming in, so it's kinda all like one thing. But, you know, technically, they can escort us, so we're just trying to time it so it just rides that way, you know? What else? What am I missing, guys?
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. So, again, thank you, guys, for, for your patience. Like I said, there's a whole bunch of increased motorcycle traffic for, for next week, so just keep your eyes open. These guys are, you know, not used to these crazy New York drivers. I'm joking about that from New York City, I'm a former cab driver, so I know that, I know what that's about. But, yeah, if you guys, like I said, keep your eyes open, if you can come out and support us, that would be fantastic. Thank you again to the Village Webster for continued support.
Well, we, as a board in the village, in the community, we greatly appreciate what you've done, especially for our veterans, and in, in recognition of that, I'd like to read a proclamation on behalf of our board and present you with a plaque, if, okay? Joe, would you mind taking some pictures before we get this up on the website also? Can you join me, please? I had to print it out with big letters with my old eyes. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Widow's Sons is a motorcycle riders' association that is active across the country and in several countries around the globe, and whereas the New York Widow's Sons King's Guard Chapter is a nonprofit organization located in the Rochester area and has been active in the Webster community for over six years, and whereas over one hundred thousand dollars has been raised by their dedicated efforts to benefit several local organizations, including the Badger Honor Association, Shriners Hospital for Children, Open Door Mission, and Masonic War Veterans. And whereas they stand out above the rest when it comes to supporting veterans and our local heroes, and our annual Spring Thing event provides a fun opportunity for the community to unite for the benefit of Webster firefighters and the New York Warrior Alliance, now therefore be it resolved that I, John Cahill, Mayor of the Village of Webster, and on behalf of the Village Board trustees, do hereby recognize Widow's Sons King Guard Chapter and extend heartfelt appreciation for the dedication to supporting Webster community. And witness whereof, I have here, unto set my hand and declare Saturday, May twentieth, two thousand seventeen, as Widow's Sons' Day in the Village of Webster."
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. You're honored. Thank you.
Thank you so much. See you soon. See you. Okay. Thanks again. I'm just... She's doing my... She's just taking pictures. Yeah, please, if you would. I'm right here next to her. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in with these guys. Thanks, you. Thank you so much. You guys did something for us on the plaque, don't you guys?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay. All right, good. Don't move, we got some going on, nail the plaque for a little second. Where did Yale go?
Where did that go?
Out.
Dave, Dave's not here.
We're not done yet. Where is he?
Here he is. All right, ready, guys?
Yeah.
Ready.
Nice.
Thanks. Hope you feel better.
You guys, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah. Thank you. All right, next up, we have my favorite part of the meeting, public comment. So, if anyone would like to give a point this evening, feel free.
Good evening. I have a letter here, like, did you all before it started? I think I'm getting a buckle in.
Yeah, I got two there.
Catch this.
Good evening. So, I wanted to talk about this intermunicipal agreement. It's my understanding that this intermunicipal agreement is to lower the rates for the out-of-district users, so that it's fair. That's, that's the whole idea. Is that not correct? That it's fair that they have the same rate as everyone in the village? The otherwise intermunicipal agreement is exactly the same as the last one that we're strongly signed. And, so, in, in order to, to be fair, the, the, the way this works is the, the town collects the sewer fee, and they collect their, their amount of sewer fee, and then reimburses the village for the one hundred and thirty dollars per, per unit. So, realistically, in order to be fair to these people, they're, they're still paying the, the town sewer rate no matter what. In order to be fair to them, what we should do is rebate those individuals, not lower the, the rate that the town reimburses the village, because otherwise, the people who are actually spending the money aren't getting the money back. And additionally, we're just giving the, the town money. We're, it's not fair, it's not that the people that are, are paying the extra money are not, are not getting that money back. So, I, I strongly, strongly urge the, the Village Board not to pass this intermunicipal agreement as it's written. It doesn't make any sense. You, we are not, we, the, the people of the village are not getting anything for this. You're not returning, getting anything from the town in return. All we are is giving them money per this agreement. Five thousand dollars about. So, for the, for the town, that five thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket. For the village, that's a pretty, pretty substantial drop in revenue on a, on a year-to-year basis. So, it, it, there, there was some talk of their, the town being able to tax us for the, for the wellfields. The intermunicipal agreement that, that you're looking at signing is no different in, in wording, in fact, it's identical in wording as the previous agreement. So, there's no additional saving or, or protection that, that we're getting as, as village residents from this municipal agreement. So, this is a one-way gift to the town, doesn't, doesn't, so, there's three problems with it. It doesn't help the village residents whatsoever. We get nothing out of the deal. Two, the out-of-district sewer users don't get anything out of the deal, they still pay the same rate to the town. And, three, we get actually less money in the village, and there's, there's no benefit whatsoever for village residents.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, it's, uh...
I have one minute and twenty-four seconds left.
Appreciate very much.
I have one minute and twenty-four seconds left. I'm sorry.
Now, according to my clock, you don't want to...
Well, sir...
Thanks. Appreciate it very much.
Sir, you do this to me every time.
Well, I'm just looking at the clock, and my clock says we have five minutes left, so I'd appreciate it if you'd have a seat, sir.
So, I, I, I...
Thank you very much.
This is an important thing, I would, I would ask the board to let me finish out my one minute.
Your minute's up. Your five minutes left, sir. Thank you very much. Have a seat.
Cahill, I really, really cannot wait until you're gone.
Is this... I just stand...
Luckily, I don't have anything to pass out to take up my minute. We're timing it that close.
Oh, is it?
I'm Richard Rollard, Twenty Elm Street. I wanna talk, first of all, tonight, on a subject I've been talking on for several weeks. I'm gonna try to read this as best I can read my own writing. My dictionary defines debt as anything that is owed. It doesn't say anything about a legal document or anything. If I was to borrow a quarter from somebody, I would be expected to pay it back. I wouldn't have to sign a legal document. So, when it was stated in the paper that there was no new debt, this is very untrue. We have a lot of new debts in the village in the last four years. Thanks to the way the water was switched, switch was handled, the village residents owe a debt of probably over a hundred, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. This was stated in the paper today, and this did not include the off-site wells or more. This is to clean up the wellfield and to make it sellable. Also, there is a cost of replacing the tanks with the new cell tower. This costs about four years of the revenue that we're getting for renting the cell towers. So, the last four years have basically been a wash. We made nothing off the towers up there for the last four years, 'cause it's gonna cost us totally about four years of the revenues to replace them. Another bad deal with the water. Even the town supervisor agrees the way the water was switched was a bad deal, as he stated today in the Webster Herald. All right, now, I wanna talk a little bit on the sewer. My understanding has been previously stated, the town charges all residents receiving sewers Services include those residing, receiving services from the Village of Webster. This was just dated. Lowering the rate would not help the property owners, but only the town of Webster. By lowering the rate, the town of Webster is charging for their, those out of the village users would only be adding the town's revenue, or the town's ripping off their own rent, town users, because they're charging a seventy-point-nine percent fee at your new rate, if you charge them the same rate as us, and the town keeps the difference, as a seventy percent markup on what we charge our own people in the village. Now, this seems a little excessive to me for collecting the money for the village and giving it to us. They're charging a seventy-point-nine percent markup? Okay, now, I wonder why we're doing this? Is this another one of the well-known, well-exhibited, many happened in the last four years, backdoor deals? Are we making a backdoor deal there for something? Why are we doing this? You say for goodwill. I don't think it was goodwill today in the paper when the supervisor criticized the way the water switch was handled, saying it was very poorly handled. And we're doing this for goodwill? I think maybe the town owes the village in goodwill. And if you are gonna switch and lower the rate to these people, I think it should be a rebate to these people, not lining the town supervisors' pockets, the town budget. After all, the town is the one that helped the tax cap and everything this year, except the board's wages. Thank you.
Anyone else to say?
Yes, sir. I just wanna make a couple, as, as was mentioned by the first speaker, I was involved, I was on the board at the time, and then initial IMA was signed. Just a point, a couple of points of clarification, we did not have a set sewer rate at that time. Now, we have set and established a sewer rate, we know what the costs are per gallon, per, per tree. There seems to be some outrage that we're not paying back to town residents. I'm trying to figure out exactly what that threshold is, because the town residents have been paying one-sixty-seven-fifty or one-sixty-five since two thousand and nine, and we've been charging the town since I agree with the sign, one-thirty. So, thirty-five dollars isn't the threshold, but somewhere, when you get a little higher, there, we'd pass a threshold where it gets upsetting. The town, my understanding, I'm not gonna speak for the town, I have a town-wide sewer district, have to charge everybody the same rate. There's not a mechanism to do that. And that's when, I just wanted to clarify, when I was on the board at the time this was signed, there wasn't a sewer rate established.
That's correct.
Now, there's one that's established.
That's correct. Thank you, Jacob. We appreciate that. Anyone else this evening? If not, we'll move right into board business.
Mayor, I don't know where I would fit into this procedure tonight, but I have my proclamation to give to you, to the board.
Absolutely. Right now is mine.
Do it now, because we might get through the whole night, and I'll still be sitting here saying...
No, 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 no.
I didn't give it to you.
I'm not gonna make you wait. Absolutely. Mayor Ruat, please.
So, these are copies just for you and for Russell?
Have you been to the town yet?
I'm going to the town, because the town, you know, you can't wait. They have a brand-new building, they have a, something... I don't know. I can't charge too much. 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 I can't charge too much.
All right, next is a resolution to approve the minutes from the Village Board reading of April twenty-seventh. Questions? additions, completions? I think it was just me, you, and Peter.
Thank you, Corrigan. I'll take Cahill. Thank you. I'll cover it. And I'm not... Something's...
All right, well, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to second approve the minutes of the April twenty-seventh, for the... Second amendment.
Trustee Cahill?
I'm staying over there.
Trustee Alvaro?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Trustee Byer?
I'm with him here.
Okay, and Trustee Lewis?
All right, motion passed. Thanks. A resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Uh, resolution to approve the claims and warrants. All you had to sign question?
Yeah.
Uh, there's a three-hundred dollar charge for signage, or three-sixty, something was the company. Woman's name under, Barb, I think Barb and Dina, or...
There's the three-sixty group, it's image three-sixty, right?
The fifty and the three-hundred dollars, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, I don't know. Oh, image three-sixty, there it is. Yeah, banner. Oh, it's the fifty at the anniversary.
Anniversary, yeah.
Shake the flag. Should they replace them, how many of them were replaced?
I believe they went through, they're replacing all of them, are getting ready to put them out there.
Every year we're doing all of them, really?
No, there's a portion of them we do, let me see how many we have, it should be about eighty. Do you have the name on? That was on the first bank card, wasn't it?
I think so.
Flag, brackets, wood poles, yes. Yeah, I think that was all.
Second page, second and third pages, flag holders.
Yeah, they've got some holders.
You buy the flag holders at different times they take it. According to this?
Yeah, they got some flag holders, so sometimes the ones break and then they're... I'm just looking for the flags themselves and the number of them. Yeah, there's wood poles, one sixty-seven.
Yeah, there are wood poles as well.
Yeah, there's wood poles too, that's why it's looking like they added up things up. There's one sixty-two for the wood flags, or excuse me, wood poles with the tubes, so they can swivel around. There's... Two-twenty-one was for the flags themselves, that was twenty-five.
Who pays that, I think?
I'm just looking at, that's the brackets. Oh, it was on first bank card. A little more for that, a little number, yeah, I'll get a breakdown on it.
That's gotta complete, that would only make sure.
No, it looks, I think it's, might be all the flags, because I know we found a new supplier for them, it's considerably cheaper than we've got them in the past. And it looks like about twenty-five poles, there's about, I think there's eighty, what we do, eighty baskets, there's like forty-eight, um, flags, or poles there, and then we put the baskets on, so, I can get the detail on it.
Right.
How many, how many flags there total will be put up, what'd you say, ballpark? How many exact, sees look, what exactly?
Fifty-ish.
All right, okay.
I don't do approximate though.
Okay, all right, that answers my question.
All right, so if there's any more questions, I'll entertain a motion to second to pay the bills.
I'll second it.
Trustee Val King?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, next is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the amended IMA with the town of Webster related to the other district sewer residents, um, and the related fee schedule. I know we've had discussions over this for the last number of weeks, so, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to second, authorize the mayor to sign the amended IMA.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Val King? Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Val King?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
So we will need to revise the fee schedule accordingly. Next, we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter from Free Max for the annual, the third compensation plan, and the audit is for the period of January first, two thousand and sixteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. Questions? I'll entertain a motion to second.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Val King?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, next is the memorandum of understanding between the Friends of Webster Historic Preservation and the village of Webster. We talked about this at the last board meeting, and that the board has not been updated at a workshop in over a year regarding the plans for this, uh, this, the wood that's in storage. We never were provided with proof of insurance. We did receive an email from Mr. Elder regarding this issue, and specifically said we would provide a insurance certificate as of Wednesday of last week, and that still has not been forthcoming. Mr. Elder, if you'd like to update us as to some specific dates, plans, and copies of insurance, that'd be appreciated.
Absolutely. I'm gonna split this into, obviously, the organization has five board members, so my part of this is going to be to talk to you about the insurance. I'm gonna hand over to Bill to talk to you about the plans, because Bill is extraordinarily good, he has a deep history about the depot, and he can give you some good overview about that. I also wanna thank you for your patience, I know I was supposed to be here last meeting, my son is currently in Japan, he's providing air support as a Marine.
Yep.
And, so, a little tidbit before...
He's gonna be gone for two years.
Two of you, yeah. So, the sum total is, we do have the insurance. The MOU is a little ambiguous about what the insurance was for, so the insurance policy that we have provides for protection for the village facilities, and also provides for property loss damage for the wood. So that's the combination of the two. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just looking where it identifies that here.
If you look down below, it talks about aggregate coverage, the aggregate coverage, that's a one-million-dollar policy, then we have, then we have a policy on our, on our properties.
Take, that's outlined in the binder?
It is.
Specifically?
You have, yeah, you have an effective summary of the binder. I mean, if you'd like the binder, you can get that to you, just, Carl, do we have the binder, probably, at some point? This is the, this is the summary, not with you, okay, we can certainly, if you're interested in more information, we can answer those questions, so...
All right, well, we can probably, we can just call it, just suffice.
Yeah, but I mean, you've got, but you've got the summary, anything, anything you need to do research on, I think you've got it, so...
Yep, we do, thank you for that.
All right.
So, the premium, the fifty-dollar premium, that says for property premium, you had to, you must have to give the insurance agency a estimate of the value of the wood?
Actually, I know this is gonna sound counterintuitive, they really didn't care. What they cared is how much wood there was in the square footage, it was, in effect, the cubic feet or the square footage multiplied by the height, whichever one to look at it, to figure out that, they really, I tried to do that, that was my initial concept, was to give them a value, and that was pretty much rejected, it wasn't pretty, it was rejected. So the end result was, they wanted to know the quantity more than the value.
All right, so how did they, how did they, how did they come about, say, all right, hypothetically, the building catches on fire, burns down, right, you file a claim, how do they know how much to pay?
They gave us a five-thousand-dollar value for the wood.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so they didn't really, they're, and we have had, we've had discussions in our own group, we've had, we've had discussions in our own group about this, just to answer that question further, there is, there is a, it is difficult to pin down the value of what that wood is actually worth. I mean, it could vary considerably, but it's, but, and I don't, not to sound, you know, trite, but it's our wood, and so we're taking the risk there, but, but we, so we don't know if it's worth, we, at this point, we don't have a good peg on it. Carl's done some research on it, but, but the values are, let me put it this way, the closest you can do is price it as barn wood, and that in itself is a slippery price range. It depends on...
Well, there's a company out of Victor that deals specifically in this.
Yep, and he did, he did...
And they sell it by board foot.
They do, and we looked at, we looked at the board feet argument, but the quality and the type of wood matters.
That's subjective.
It is subjective, which is the whole point. And unfortunately, our wood is not the same quality. Like, if you go up there and you look at the pile, you'll see some of it that looks really good, you'll see some of it that looks like it's a little bit worn, and you'll see others that still got burn damage on it.
Right.
So, how you arrive at a consistent price?
Well, I appreciate very much you giving the insurance coverage, and I'd be very interested to see, you know, hearing some concrete plans, because, you know, like, it's been a year, and, and we haven't been updated, and I know that, you know, this, this issue's been, you know, discussed for at least three years.
Oh, it's more like six.
But yeah, I know, three, so, but yeah, at some point, we gotta come to a conclusion as to what's gonna happen.
Well, insofar, insofar as you're tolerant of us leaving the wood in your sheds, we don't, you know, it's, if you told us tomorrow we had to get out of the sheds, we would, we would, we would get out of the sheds, I mean, we'd have to find a way.
Right.
Insofar as you allow us in the shed, we're gonna keep working on trying to find a place for the wood.
Well, I understand it, but at some point, you gotta say, okay, we can't find anything, nobody's interested in giving us any land, nobody's interested in giving us any money to do what we need to do, you know what I mean, it's, I don't mean to say, you know, be flippant, but, you know, this has been going on for a long time.
Oh, yes, that's true.
And I know, you know, we're buying new equipment all the time, and there's, it's a pretty big building that's being utilized, that we can't put equipment in.
And if you said, and if you said you needed it, we have to face the music down there. Right.
And I think this board is not, you know, we're not really, I'm not saying, okay, I want that out there in thirty days, I think what the board is interested in is having some concrete definitive plans that says, okay, you know, within X amount of months, all right, this is what we're going to be doing, rather than, you know, it's been a year, we've heard nothing, okay?
Well, let Bill tell you a little bit what we're doing over the year. Sure. And then he can give you a little bit of idea of others, some of his vision for the future, how's that? All right, Bill, it's all yours.
Just throwing you the wool, you know it, Mayor.
Yeah, he knows what he's, he, I'm not throwing him, he's...
One thing we can say is that you do have a visionary up here. Or should I say a dreamer? I, I, um, I can say emphatically that, you could say more treading water than anything, because many overtures have been made since that building was put on on the west side to people, various people and entities about acquiring a piece of property, which is the big stumbling block.
Sure.
So, I don't know if you were apprised of the letter we sent to Xerox and asking them to do business with us down at the end of Donovan Street?
How long ago was that?
Uh, probably, I think it's a year and then a year, yeah.
Not quite.
Probably not quite a year.
Okay, so they...
Right about the time we signed the contract.
They referred me to some person, I don't even know what her title was, community something, okay, and we had several talks, and then she was going to talk to her real estate people, and we eventually came back and said, well, it's not in our budget this year. Well, we weren't asking for Xerox to say, here, you know, this is on us, which would have been wonderful, but we weren't asking for that. What we were asking for was to sit down with somebody and say, can we talk about this parcel of land? Because when we're talking about a vision, we're talking about more than putting up that structure that we took down. This is what should be done, if it's going to be done at all and done well, that's to acquire a piece of property and have our little village country museum. So first goes the train station, and then other buildings or whatever would benefit that place, sort of like the historical museum in the town of Ontario, or miniature Genesee Country Museum. Because our thinking is, once we get the building located and start, the rest will follow. You know, there's been so many people and organizations that have said, how are you coming, you know, we'd like to help, and meeting people have offered money, but without a place to actually build and back up again, we're just treading water. So, once again, the winter's over, thank God, and we'll start beating the bushes. Right now, there are two parcels, three parcels, that would fit the bill perfectly. And if, if arms can be twisted, or people can be made to get on board, that would be wonderful, and that's what we're going to try to do, to get more people involved, especially landowners who could contribute to this idea, and see where it goes. I've already been promised in the village, a barn and a shed, and an old shed, I should say. So, my thinking is, what else can we save? And if we do save it, where's it gonna go? Well, if we have a place, that answers that question. So, that's about all I've got to say on it, really, now. But I, nobody's really forgotten about you, the board, or the project, it's, it's just an awful nut to crack to get that one parcel of land to get everything going again.
Thank you.
I know that we had tried, early on, before you guys got involved. And we went to the town, we went to the school system, we went everywhere, we even begged Norman, I mean, we were over there, I was, we tried everything.
Well, time, time goes on, situations change, now, right? At this particular juncture, there's a certain entity in the fire department business that's having a little bit of a problem. Well, they do own a nice piece of property out in the county line room.
Yeah, they do.
And it would be just unforgivable to not utilize that property for something as wonderful as this. So, I think that would be something that we could approach and say, how would you like to come along with us and do something really great for the town? We're, I don't think we're ever gonna find a place in the village unless it's, it's at the end of Donovan Street, but that means we gotta shake the mountains, which is Xerox, and how do you get them to respond if they don't seem to be wanting to do that?
Don't keep working, we might be able to put you in touch, what, you said there's three, you got three different areas, correct?
Right, at least three different areas.
Well, maybe if you wanted to share this through an email, that, you know, you don't necessarily need to publicly state who these people are or where this is.
Well, the reason I didn't do that...
But if you could share it with us in, 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 in an email to the board, you know, a lot of these people have lived here forever.
Yeah.
And when it comes to twisting arms, maybe they can, you know, they may know these people or have relationships with these people, and, you know, maybe they can help, I'm just saying, but I appreciate very much you coming in and letting us know where you are.
Okay.
And it seems like, you know, you're where you were a year ago, and, you know, perhaps going forward, you know, not every single workshop, every other workshop, if you could come in and update us as to where you are, I think would be helpful to the board, because, you know, we're more than willing to... because, you know, we're more than willing to help, but we gotta know where to direct the energy. You know what I mean?
I think we should appoint somebody to do that.
So, you know, however you wanna do that, and, and like, okay, can anyone on the board help us by speaking to A, B, C, or D, okay?
True.
I mean, that's, I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion, that's all.
No harm, no harm in that, it's taken, taken kindly, thank you.
I appreciate you coming in, thanks.
Do you want, you and Vivian staying down in the area where it was? Or what about up here, there's a lot of land, shantos. Would a small piece of that fit the bill for it to go up on State Road? There's nothing happening up there.
If we were to get, if someone were to come to us and say, we'll give you a half acre, we would take it.
Yes.
If we're not better aware of what we'll make, we would make that work. We've had numerous discussions about how to fit the depot in various places. We've had discussions about how to, you know, scope the depot up or down in size, um, since it, since its original size was, what, half, two thirds of size, and it really was, half the size. So we have, so we, we have flexibility, but, um, you know, it's just a matter of getting that, that, that Bill said. We, we, we just had to have somebody step up and, and, uh, and do that. But, uh, so yeah, if it was State Road, if it was at the end of Martin Street, if it was on Orchard Street, if it was at the end of Shadowwood Lane, if it was on Bay Road, it wouldn't matter, we would be able to, yeah.
I think our priority is, why I said Donovan Street is because you still have the existing trail.
Right.
And if we could put it right next to the trail, you know, get the old river road, uh, the rails from someplace and put a few down there, because who? You start with this building. The next thing you know, somebody says, I've got an old caboose you can have. You know, it's just mind-boggling what happens, and I've been involved with a lot of, like, going to these, uh, train meetings, these train fairs they have, where fifty, a hundred people show up with all their train stuff. And, uh, they'll talk your ear off about how it can be done, and all the people out there willing to contribute and so on. So...
Have you talked at all to, um, cause I know Jim Gark owns a lot of plant down there. You have any conversations with him?
Uh, yeah.
Cause there's, there's, at the west end of that pinnacle down there, it's, it's pretty much just scrub, not doing anything with it.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether you could fit a, a, a downsized version? I don't know.
I was thinking the same thing. I was gonna reach out to him, cause he, he owns that whole block, and on the other end, all the way down, what is that, which street is that, uh?
Donovan Commercial?
Commercial.
Commercial, yeah.
Yeah, he owns all the way, where on the bend there, I mean, there's three or four of the buildings there, I mean, so...
Well, recently, they, not recently, but there's another thing, that property is the Martin property, it's come up for sale.
Alright.
But, um...
And the answer is, the answer is we try, yes, the answer is we have had some temporary conversations.
West side.
Yeah.
It's not, and, and it's, it's just a matter of, you know, a few people wanna give up their land, they want you to buy it, so we have to, that, that becomes an issue, we have to have money to buy it, so. So where, where does, kinda, there's this little circular thing going on, but it doesn't, doesn't mean that process won't stop. As Bill said, have to get it, is the right way to say it, is situations change. And, you know, we found over the last year that things that seemed to be impossible, come six months later, become less of. So let's see what the, so sometimes it's just finding those opportunities.
So, do you have a 501(c)(3) regarding this project?
Yes, yeah.
So I take it you solicit for donations and have, or?
We have.
So what, what do you have available to purchase property?
Not much, not much.
Yeah.
We have enough to get a, had a paper for somebody to sign their name on.
Let's get it out. Let's just start.
Can I, can I, can I hire a fundraiser?
Let me finish, I'm gonna get out of here. I, I can also remember coming before this board and pleading for more time. No, it was a zoning board, because, uh, Morgan Management was ready to bring in the wrecking ball. And if it weren't for that little, uh, time freight, uh, that we went through, was two months, they gave us two more months.
Right.
And by then, we had our foot in the door, and the next thing you know, the, the Morgan Management itself pushed, put their, uh,
Right.
cooperated with us.
They, they, they were very, very, they were very, very generous.
They were really wonderful. They let us go, and let us go, and it all came down. I noticed that, uh, thing up on the screen today about, uh, compensation. Well, I, I remember what we went through with them on that, uh, workman's, uh, compensation thing.
Yeah, I remember that.
Nobody wanted to touch that, right? Well, finally, you might as well say they self-insured us.
Yes.
Because it was just a gift.
Yeah.
But it never would have happened if somebody didn't start the ball rolling. And we've more than started the ball rolling. It's really rolling, but it just doesn't seem to be touching the right buttons right now. But I, I'm always of the mind to be optimistic, okay? I hate to be pessimistic, but if I'm going to be optimistic, I'm gonna say tonight, that someday, you'll not only see that thing resurrected again, but the village will be very proud of it, wherever it is. So I've said it.
Thank you. Well, and, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, that, that I think it's important that, um, we have regular presentations by your group to keep it on the forefront, knowing that, okay, well, next month I gotta go in and I've gotta talk. What are we gonna do? We put a schedule together, perhaps of people that you wanna talk, and if you can solicit help from us, if we can do something and talk to somebody, that helps, you know, moving things down, down the field a little bit.
Right, communication.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you guys coming in, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I gotta add a, a little bit more to that, I can't do it. Sorry, you guys and ladies. Uh, one thing that we talked about was, uh, we're, we're sending, we haven't talked about it, but we're sending a letter to Friends of Webster, uh, Trickers.
Right.
And would be a vision that maybe they can take the original structure of the depot and put that up as a trail, like, a long trail.
I mean, I talked to you about that a couple, last year.
Yeah, we, we walked up.
To walk through that would be amazing, just amazing.
And, you know, the Whiting Road area seems like an appropriate place to put that. But anywhere, as long as we can reconstruct that original building. And, and that brings up the fact, uh, about what do we do with the remaining wood? Because that thing was a hundred feet by fifty, uh, twenty-eight feet by a hundred feet long, twenty-four. There's all kinds of good wood left, once they put that up. So, the obvious thing would be, well, how about if we sell? So how about if we sell, okay, how do you do that? Well, we put up a sign that says, barn wood for sale.
Yeah.
So, does that mean Saturday morning, we go out to the well field there and put up a sign that says, barn wood for sale? But we can't let them be on that gate because of liability things, right? So now what do you do with that wood, when you wanna take it from the barn and, what, put it out on the Whiting Road or something? You know, there's a logistical line here.
Not really. You bring in brokers that wanna buy in for the entire block.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't piecemeal it, alright? Sell it as a lot. This is what we've got, oh, X amount of board feet, and here's what we want for it.
Yeah, and then we've talked about that, but, uh, would they be able to come in and take that right out of the...
I don't think Jason would wanna meet there every Saturday, opening up the gate.
Yeah.
You know, fifteen, twenty people come in and look at it.
No.
You know, you talk to the main brokers, or there's, there's, um, House, um, House Parts on South Avenue, Rehouse on West Ridge Road.
I have.
There's, there's a company, and I talked to the guy at Rehouse, he's interested in it, he wants to look at it. So, and then there's the, the place out in, uh, in, uh, in Victor, that I know of. Because what you do is you just, you just have them come in and bid. And that's, that's how you do it. You just take the highest bidder.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll pursue that, but right now, the idea of the building being, uh, directed at the trail, that would be really...
That would be amazing, I'd love to see that.
Alright, okay. You know, a problem with that, the town doesn't own the trail. It's actually an Eastman from RGE owns the land.
Wearing all the trail heads.
They own the whole thing. RGE owns the whole OJAC trail.
Yeah, I understand that, and we've, we've already done that.
You've already done a lot.
With, with no good results.
You've already hightacked it, RGE?
Absolutely.
Well, so you can't go to the Friends of Webster Trails and say, can we put up a building? They don't give, they don't give you authority to tell you, yes, yes, you can.
But you don't have to go to them if it's not in their property.
Which part of it isn't on RGE?
The whole walking trail isn't on the, uh, RGE property. It goes all over the village, or all over the town.
If I, if I could, I think Carl, I think, I think we're talking two different things. The, Carl was talking about the Whiting Road, the White...
There's no room around Whiting Road. If you've ever been through those trails, there's absolutely no...
Well, those, that's also town property.
Well, it is town property, but...
Yeah.
Maybe you could put it over in, maybe in Gosnell's, you know, on Bosberg Road, where there's that big open field.
Yeah.
But have you walked the trails? I run, I run the host trails on Whiting Road all the time. There's no, there's no room to put up a building in. The trailhead is at the parking lot. And, and actually, you'd have to use up the parking lot to put up a building. It's, it's not a real track, that's not a practice, but... Maybe the one on Gosnell, you know, at the corner of Bosberg?
That was just, uh, a theory, you know, like, we talked, we haven't talked with the Friends of Webster Trail yet. We, we're sending them a letter, and we wanna, you know, see if they're interested in maybe, um, approaching a project, you know? And, you know, there's, I think there's multiple places where they could put it. And I understand you saying the RGE thing, and we went to them and talked to them about it. I had a proposal on paper showing that building in the RGE property on North Avenue. And they didn't go for it because they said, what if we have to dig through? To bury a fiber cable? Or something like that. Well, it wouldn't have a concrete slab. It would still be a covered bridge type thing, or they could use their ditch witch and go right through it, if they had to do that. But I think there's gas lines there, too. So you hit, anyway, we, we thought about approaching them a second time and say, if you need to knock the thing down, do it, to put your facility in whatever it is. But that would be a good, perfect place, right down there next to the mower place, you know?
Squeaky wheel, you know how that goes.
Yeah.
You know, so this, just to say that we're still, we're still trying. We're, we're working at it.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next is a resolution, um, to authorize mayor's, mayor to sign the, uh, tower lease agreement with, uh, Verizon. Please, familiar with this, right?
Yes.
Alright. Entertain a motion in a second.
Put that down first?
Yes.
Trusty Valteen? Trusty Byers?
Aye.
Trusty Lansing?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Uh, next is a seeker resolution. Essentially, this is a type-two seeker. There is no environmental impact. So, entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Trusty Lansing?
Aye.
Trusty Byers?
Aye.
Trusty Valteen?
Aye.
Trusty Valteen?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion taken.
Alright, next is a resolution to authorize mayor to sign the, uh, the tax form, TGN584, as related to the Verizon lease.
I, I assume what Verizon is doing is they're gonna, they're gonna record in the county clerk's office, the memorandum of the lease, and in order to do that, they need that to go with it.
Yep.
Did you say TP?
TP.
TP five, the TP584.
I type them all the time.
What you doing down there? Trusting ass. Alright, I'll entertain a motion in a second, then.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trusty Lansing?
Aye.
Trusty Valteen?
Aye.
Trusty Valteen?
Aye.
Trusty Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion taken.
Alright, next is a resolution for the mayor to sign amendment number one, additional extensions for Verizon. That's gracious. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Byers?
Aye.
Trusty Lansing?
Aye.
Trusty Valteen? Valteen? Trusty Valteen?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion taken.
That's a strong aye, Jerry. Alright, with authority. Alright, next is a, uh, resolution authorized mayor, the, uh, Mayor Cahill to sign the AT&amp;T, um, amendment for water tower lease. Um, I know we did have discussion regarding this, that they were seeking a significant amount of money to move their equipment from where it is to the, uh, um, to the cell tower that we are putting together, and, um, I did have a conversation with their representative, and, um, as reflected in this agreement, there is no, uh, rental abatement, so... That's good news. So this also is a, a type-two, there's, uh, seeker, so there's no environmental impact also. Um, so at this time, I will, uh, entertain a motion in a second to authorize, uh, Mayor Cahill to sign the, uh, the second amendment to the, uh, water tower lease agreement with, uh, AT&amp;T.
I'll go with it.
Jerry, you go second?
I'm in.
Daryl, Trusty Byers is, uh, first. There's gonna be an arm wrestling match over here, I think, in a second.
Alright, Trusty Byers?
Aye.
Trusty Valteen?
Aye.
Trusty Valteen?
Aye.
Trusty Lansing? Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
We're just a little younger, we can respond.
Age discrimination, Trusty Byers.
Yeah, that one was very nice.
Mr. White, how are you this evening, sir?
I'm good.
I mean...
So, is there one carrier left? Is there singular? Which, which one's left?
T-Mobile.
Has anybody made any contact with them to find out?
I did talk to Don Carpenter the other day, he was gonna reach back out to them again, cause he had a slobber, but, uh...
Yeah, that's the one I haven't heard.
Yeah. Barry, you bury it, because the guy thinks that he said we have been talking to him.
I'll give Don a call and board.
He, he needs to stay on that, cause it's gonna hit them pretty quick here, so...
Did I miss the construction, this guy? Was that sent, and I just missed it from that?
Yes, it was. There was, uh, a church sent, um, felt, it was a week and a half ago.
Okay, alright, thanks. I'll talk to you tomorrow morning about that.
I'm not gonna be here tomorrow night.
Anything else, sir?
I have nothing other than following up on T-Mobile there.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, next is the capital overtime report. Seven forty-six at, um, seven point five hours overtime?
Yeah.
What was that?
Probably due to the rains and, uh, the flooding. Flains, I think there was a flood, sand, or storm sewer on Kidover Park.
Yeah, I remember, okay, I got you.
Yeah, and there was a problem on Donovan Avenue as well.
So, let me ask you this question, because I know I brought this up to you a couple few months ago, regarding every time a rain down here, over here, um, in front of, uh, Burks, there's like a massive puddle, is that over here?
Yeah.
Alright. So, I don't know what you did, but I haven't seen it there since, so, obviously, you did something. What did you guys do?
I talked to it sternly and said that it shouldn't allow the water to...
You talked to who?
Talked to it sternly. No, we just did nor, you know, normal flushing, um, and I think, you know, some of it's depending upon, you know, the rate that the rain falls, obviously, you know?
We had some pretty significant rain in a short amount of time. I haven't seen that pond over there as I did a few months ago, so, what did you guys do? Seriously, did nothing? It just, a fluke?
No, normal flushes.
Take credit, I did this, I sent, I sent mad down the hole.
Um, I, honestly, I'll have to double check with the guys unless they went down there. You know, there's normal flushing we go through, they might, sometimes you'll have a piece of debris falling. We just had one the other day, Clover Drive, where there was some pretty wet backyard... We just had one the other day, Clover Drive, where there was some pretty wet backyard. We're investigating this wet area where we do have a, a branches of storm sewer off of that. Um, in doing that and looking at flushing the lines, there were some slow moving drains on, up near two fifty on the Clover. We got about three D I's up. That one was going down really slow and having a problem, and there was a block that had come in and just blocking the...
Well, somebody did something there, because that, that, that was always a pond in there when we get a torrential downpour. I've noticed it for years. And it's just, I don't think it's coincidental. I said something to you about it, and like, the next thing you know, it's fixed.
I can just make things happen. I will find out, though, if, if anybody recalls exactly, um...
Okay, so we have, Jake?
I just got a couple of things. I would like to start with that. I really don't, actually, I do, but if everybody laughs when I say a couple of things, I'm gonna be quick, so. Um, community development block grant, we applied for funding for sidewalks on the north side of Park Avenue and west side of Lappin Park. To know the community development block grant program, you can't do anything until we get, there's a contract in place. Last year, I think we got the contract in November for the Kittleberger Park sidewalks. Uh, we just completed the Kittleberger Park sidewalks now, um, because we had it so late in the year, so with the, they made the announcement, it's not official till the full county legislature votes on it, and they get the plan sent to HUD for review, and they get word back from that. But we, we asked, I think it was an eighty-three thousand dollar ask, which we never asked for, yeah, we get, yeah, almost fifty-eight.
Who wrote, who wrote the, who wrote it this year?
I think I did, again.
Oh!
Which was not voting well for me here.
No.
But, um, the, I mean, we're, we're, we got a good, good chunk of change there. We're gonna see how much we can do for that, or if we might even look at, depending on workload of orthab project and some of the other things we have going on, might even see if we can do, when, when we get the contract, if we can do a portion of this.
Yeah, be great.
If we don't get it till late, you know, that's where we're really tied up with doing moves and everything else, so...
What's your plans as far as the, the new sidewalks on Kittleberger, filling in the both sides of the sidewalk right now, where you guys dug, where they dug out? There's no topsoil in there. Are we gonna be filling that back in with topsoil?
You did not go down there today.
What?
That was done yesterday.
Was it? Awesome.
So, yeah, they got, there was definitely difficulty, like, you know, getting the topsoil because it's been so wet, nobody, nobody was screening it, so...
Right.
Yeah, the contractor came in to finish that portion of it yesterday.
Okay. Is that part, was that part of what they were paid to do, was to backfill the topsoil?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, if there's four different options when you're doing sidewalk replacements on a county bid.
Right.
And one of them is remove or replace, um, all-inclusive, where they do, they go through and just pop them out and put the new ones in.
Right.
And they, the guys, you know, they got, they got the routine down.
Yep.
Three days. They went through and, you know, got everything...
No, it looks great. It had a great job done.
Yeah, really nice. And I think their bill was on this evening, and there was a, there was a bit, bit of retainage back because of the topsoil. Um, so we'll be, expect to see, you'll get one more small portion of the bill. I think the total bill is sixty-eight thousand something from them, um, and I think it was sixty-five, so we retained back, I think, about thirty-eight hundred.
Okay.
So...
Great, nice.
Yeah. Oh, and surplus declarations, um, because of the mini bid and the fund that we had last year, and the summertime being down trucks and not getting a big one until, two days before it snowed really, really, really hard, um, I'm gonna do, we're gonna start, because the budget's passed, we're gonna start looking at the large truck, putting in the mini bid now. Um, the smaller trucks, you know, pickup truck and flatbed, I don't wanna have them with Ford twenty-seventeens, so we're gonna get those on the new model year later on in the summer. I will start putting them in through, but ask for a later delivery date after the new model year comes out in September. It will be started now, but ask for it later. Um, the, and then at that time, when we get delivery of those, I put those, there's a fall auction or there's online auctions. I've been talking to some of the other superintendents when we meet, and there's another online auction company that a lot of them have been, have a very good success with, so you might want to try one or two of the vehicles there and see.
So what are you gonna do? What's on the surplus declaration?
Nothing. No, because that, in the, they, they do have a fall auction, too, when we, when we go, so...
And they're sending anything to the one just in the summer?
No, not re, not, not just yet. I'll, like I said, we can do an online one, um, also later on, but...
About the mower?
I'm gonna get those things going.
About your sending a mower, right?
Well, you were talking about sending a mower, a replacement mower, and there was discussions about not having to have a mower, so we're trying to get that squared away, get direction, because we can't have really just one mower, so...
That was a good discussion, though. I was just asking for it.
Yeah.
It was just an idea, because I was told it was a stupid idea, and I was like...
I told them to be a little nicer next time.
So much for, so much for diplomacy.
Um, but, yeah, so we were, I think, you know, we, like I said, that, those ones we can do, um, online ones as well.
Okay.
The last few years, when I went, in fact, I'm going, it's Saturday, but when I go to Delmyra once, my, my older son Evan's been very interested in going to them. There, every year, there's more and more and more and more mowers, which I think isn't looking great. It's nice in the springtime, but when you go there, there's only, I don't believe there's forty-five people around this area that wanna go get a big, you know, zero turn lawnmower. It's, and I think sometimes when we get a little too flooded, you gotta window bound it and reduce what you're gonna get for it.
There's a lot of landscapers out there, believe me, that, you know, they can pick up a decent, fair zero turn, but, you know, like, I think the one down here, one of the sewer, sewer street plant has just over four hundred hours. I think this one has like seven hundred hours, which isn't a lot.
No.
And if somebody, you take those things to the, to the auction, and if the landscapers are down there, they can pick one up relatively inexpensive, they're gonna jump on it all day long, because, you know, the, the I Z fifteen hundred fifty, or sixty-one deck is, we recorded the five hundred bucks, I believe, the fifty-two was seventy-two. Yeah.
Yeah, there's, I'm interested to see how many there is Saturday. I tried looking at their, off to their website last night, but I was on my phone, I didn't wanna beat up all my data, so...
All right, thanks, Jake.
Uh, Jake?
Yes.
Talking about lawnmowers. You paid a bill for a lawnmower, Taylor Rental?
Yes.
Was that a rental of a lawnmower, or was that for fixing it there?
That was a rental of a lawnmower. We went, got a wide, walk behind one to try to mow. The parks were terribly wet. They're still wet. In fact, I went to Shands today, it was really tough. Um, we went through, it was Wilbury, and they mowed Shands, I believe, once with it. Tried to get it down so that we try to dry out, you know, when it dries, it's shorter, dries out faster. Way too, way too wet to get it, and they were letting piece of machinery, so they sent a couple guys going through quick, trying to get it so we can hopefully dry out.
They have a, a what?
We have one, it's like a twenty-two inch, little walk behind one, so they got a bigger, a little bigger, wider one. Um, they could handle that deep, tall grass. Um, like I said, tried to get it, and then it rained, I think, six inches of water.
How long did you have that?
I think one day.
Well, they charge.
Forty-nine.
That's not bad. It's not bad at all.
Rod Stewart, you have a smaller...
I told my, I have one at home. I, I got, I got a new one a couple of years ago, and I still have my old one. This way I do my backyard, I put the old one, I raise it up. There was water, um, I had water this deep over near the bushes of my backyard, so once it finally went down, I was sinking in with my boots, but I was just, I had to raise it way up, and all I was to try to get it to dry out, so where I had to bail it.
And it really needs to be mowed, you know?
That's all, it was rather, it was down by.
All right, anything else, sir?
No, the only thing that I'm gonna send out, we've got a packet in the mail from New York State regarding orthab project, doing another resolution update. Um, I just gotta just open it up, so I'll scan it and send it around.
Okay.
Um, this is supplemental agreement for that master technical aid project.
Okay.
So...
All right, thanks. All right. All right, public notice. Um, we have a couple. Well, one's an announcement, one's a public notice. Uh, the serial bond interest payment on the bond that was obtained in two thousand and twelve for eight hundred thousand dollars will be made in the amount of six thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars on May fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Um, the bond was issued upon financing of the sewer outfall of three hundred thousand dollars. A street sweeper that we paid a hundred eighty thousand dollars for, milling and paving the roads and parking lots for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Trusty Byers brought up a, a good point today, asked a very good question as to, um, what is the balance on, on these bonds? And what I can do is, and we'll just request, when you talk to Christina tomorrow, that when we do these public notifications, if she would just add in what the balances are, so that everyone knows just exactly how much money we have, and she could probably, you know, include how many more years that we're gonna have to pay. Obviously, there's gonna be significant interest payments, so... But, um, Trusty Byers, you have an announcement this evening?
I do. I received something from the P O T. It is an informational publication about what's happening along four oh four in the town. So it says here, we would like to provide an update of the status of an upcoming planned highway construction project on Route four oh four Empire Boulevard in the town of Webster. Work is set to begin on or about the week of May twenty-second, so it is coming up. However, utility relocation work will begin earlier, so probably by next week, they will be working along Route one, uh, four oh four. The project is to ease traffic congestion at two major intersections, five mile line and also hard road, and improve highway safety for all users of the highway. They will be making some slight modifications to sidewalk ramps, which will be made in three locations, Black Cherry Boulevard, Webster Thomas Boulevard, and Holt Road Intersections to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Um, I won't go into all the things that they're doing. They're gonna be adding lanes for turning, um, five mile line as well as at, on hard road. But the one thing that I should mention is, is this, um, they will be, um, it says, traffic will generally be maintained onsite with restrictions limiting construction during peak travel hours. So they're gonna try to limit their work during peak hours. However, access to driveways will be maintained, but hard road, north of Empire Boulevard will be closed for a three-week period this summer in order to raise the profile of the southbound approach to the intersection, which will improve site distance.